Reconvene is regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council. And we only have one item on the agenda. I wonder if...
May. So, Mr. Mayor.
Protocol.
Yes, so it would be best if council would have a small, a short resolution to bring back item 12B for discussion, which was regarding the $7,500 drive. Kind of finished the discussion, moved on to later items, and we talk about kind of go back now to reopen that discussion.
Motion by Council Zelinski, seconded by Council Thompson. All those in favor? And would you like to introduce this at this point?
I can give an update.
I think that would be useful to get things started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can give a brief update from the last two days, I guess, since we left this meeting off here. Today, there was a meeting from the Grand Forks Social Services Action Group. Council Mossland, Councilor Thompson, and yourself as a spectator visited Mr. Pratt and Gina Burrows, Regina, Regina, Burrows not here, to speak on behalf of Boundary Family Services, if council wishes so. Ultimately, the group had a really good discussion this afternoon, in my opinion. I believe the joint focus seems to be on the opportunity that's in front of us to form a relationship with, between B.C. Housing Boundary Family Services and in a way the city facilitating this kind of discussion to try this out for 10 weeks under set rules and conditions as Mr. Pratt, this group Boundary Family Services has established for the site. These rules were adopted last night by their board. Council did have input into, or was given the opportunity to have input into some of these procedures and policies. And like I say, they were adopted. Council received a copy of the approved items today. And yeah, that's basically where we're at right now. So the group today passed a motion to support Boundary Family Services in operating the extreme cold weather shelter until March 31, 2020, and also to ask council to defer enforcement on the site until April 1, 2020 in regards to zoning by law.
And that would be the motion that we framed with words?
Yes, I believe Mr. Mossland, or Council Mossland, has the exact resolution and may be able to read that out to council.
From the SAG group, you mean, or from our own?
From the SAG, S-S-A-G group, yes.
Yeah, that's not the motion I'm talking about at this point.
The motion is in our motion.
Yeah, our motion.
So regarding our motion, Mr. McKinnon, I think it's that one. So that's on the screen right now. We did add two small items here, and this is not really a motion. This is supposed to be the letter of comfort that we're submitting to Boundary Family Services and B.C. Housing to ensure that council wouldn't be enforcing unless, based on the observation of council, we were deemed to move forward again. We added two small items, just changed the word "meeting" to "regular meeting," and also added the caveat that, which concluded, hopefully, today, January 15, 2020. And I believe staff also made some minor corrections regarding the semicolumns and use of however.
So I'm to assume then that this would satisfy the needs of B.C. Housing to trigger the final agreement to work out the details with Boundary Family?
I can speak to those as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our interim CEO discussed this potential resolution yesterday with B.C. Housing verbally on the phone, and they seem to agree that that would satisfy their needs at the moment.
Okay, I guess that's most of the background. I wonder if Darren, you have any opening to say, or Gina, that you'd like to put on record here before we open it up to council for discussion?
You've got to hold power, it's on the side. Yeah, there you go. Now hit the big one.
This one?
Yeah. There you go.
So the irony here is that I just wrote, "I am merely the figurehead tonight," on my piece of paper, as I handed that to Darren. I wanted to thank you for having us here today. To introduce myself to those that don't know me, I am the current Chair of Boundary Family Services Society, and we are pleased to be here in a collaborative way, to be, hopefully, working with B.C. Housing, the City of Grand Forks, and Boundary Family together, to provide shelter services for 2020 until March 31. I certainly would want to rather turn this over to Darren. We are a policy board, and Darren is responsible for the operations, much like the CAO of the City of Grand Forks would be. We have the same structure, for the most part, and any questions that you have that are operational could be directed to Darren, and we are happy to be very transparent in how we plan to run this facility going forward, with your support, of course.
Thank you, Gina.
Darren.
I'm trusting that the board had, or council, pardon me, had copies of our proposed policies forwarded to you late last night or early this morning. At this point, I would just encourage any questions or concerns. We had several rolled out today at the SAG meeting, including a three-page request around a good neighbor policy and kind of feedback from community. So at this point, I just really welcome any questions at all from council and staff.
Opening it up, Council Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll just go through the documents and some of the things that I highlighted. Very first page, admission policy. Third paragraph, I'm just wondering, it says, "BFS Shelter Has Been Successful." From what I understand, this is your first shelter, no?
So, part of that document is based upon a boilerplate document that's from, so I think if you can give me a little bit of leeway around crafting an entire policy document in 16 hours, there might be a little bit of miscommunication in there that's not perfect.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in there, but this one I wanted to highlight because that's not where we're at right now, right? Couple others. So, excuse me if I repeat myself, because with our discussions, as everybody over the past few days, I don't know what was behind or in camera as opposed to in the public now, so. Oh, talk a bit about the complaints, policy, and procedure.
So our hope is that the community comes directly to the shelter with any complaints first, whether it be our onsite staff or our supervisor. From there, the complaints will come up if they're not handled suitably to the management team and myself. I spent this morning, a little over an hour, dealing with emails and phone calls already through info@boundaryfamily, as well as my own line at the office. I've always had an open door policy in community, and that will continue, that will end.
Do you have further, council?
Yes, I've got a few of them.
Nobody else is raising their hands?
On complaints, policy, procedure, conflict resolution, procedure, it says clients need to agree to abide by the conditions of the solution of this process, or acknowledge that they will be moved to another shelter. You have the power to move them to another shelter?
We have the power to provide options outside of community if they choose to go, if there's available spaces. So there are shelter beds that are available in Penticton. Penticton's increased their shelter capacity, again, to meet this cold weather need. We have sister agencies in Trail and Castle Guard. They're in the same position that we are, most of the time, they're at plus capacity. But we would make that offer. We have an ethical obligation, if somebody is being removed, to not force them back automatically under the cold.
Your fire exit procedures, again, this is one of them that is in the document, talks about each bedroom and things like that, and they'll clean that up, right? You talk a lot about safety for the clients and safety for the staff. I'm wondering, I'm struggling with a bit of the terminology, but the main thing is safety of the public. So I've got, I think residents is the same as guests, is the same as clients. Volunteers is the same as staff, basically, as far as, okay, different. Okay, one's paid and one's not, but still under your control, basically. So, again, when I say public, I'm, yeah, I'm just concerned that they're involved as far as a fire shows up, they're not a service provider or anything, they're basically the public responding, RCMP even, they're not clients, they're not staff, they're not volunteers, they're something different. In my line of work, reading the electrical meter, the public accessing the site, and hopefully all your safety procedures relate to the public also when they come to the site.
I'm not sure I follow that, Council Zelinski. Do you mean professionals accessing the site, or do you mean the general public?
No, just basically service providers, but again, with all this jargon in here, we have staff covered, we have clients covered, but even someone walking in there tomorrow, I suppose maybe volunteers more to clean up the place, right? But it's more, you know, like that guy reading the gas meter, like whoever that's going to be accessing the building per se, regardless of who the client is or who's in that building. But some people from the public will be accessing it, and I just want to make sure that they have the same right to safety as everybody else. I don't see that there's an issue, but I just see that chunk of, that segment missing of the documents.
Not to be pedantic, but that's just kind of a blanket thought, that why would anybody else be unsafe if everybody else is safe? Yeah, I think we're moving into parsing my details here.
Number of beds? Exterior security, as far as lights, cameras, and whatnot?
Lights, cameras, no action.
Let's hope so. In one of our discussions, you also mentioned how you would be dealing with your client's personal property, and the one that caught my ear was bikes, and then showing up with different bikes at different times.
So that isn't going to be a policy, that's just going to be a general rules and code of conduct? So there's kind of, you can go overboard with policies, so there is that differential around just having clearly posted code of conduct at the door for the guests?
Is there any chance, like, this process we're in is kind of backwards. Is there any chance, if you get approval from this desk and go forward to B.C. Housing, that they'll have problems with some of the policies and procedures that we've been given?
I provided the copies at the same time that you got them, once our board approved. I have not heard back from B.C. Housing. I have erred on the side of conservative policy as opposed to B.C. Housing standard policy. We will see what they say. I have not heard anything yet today.
Nothing further? Thank you.
Further, council?
Yeah, I had one or two. Yeah, you had mentioned that before, but I'm not seeing it in the documentation. Like, there is the substance use, but I'm talking, what happens if one of the clients is dealing? And the second part is, there are known dealers with recognizable vehicles that have already been there since it opened, so what would happen if one of those individuals pulled up onto the property?
So as was pointed out today by Sergeant Peffler, our Community Service Advisor Group meeting, we make a phone call and the RCMP attempt to remove. If they are not a staff member, a registered volunteer, or a registered guest, they have no business being on that property, period.
And the in-house, if somebody is seen dealing?
If I recall correctly, I have that in the policy around criminal misconduct.
Okay.
So that is in there, so that's grounds for, criminal conduct is not permitted.
That's all I had.
So we were lucky enough to get a copy of your policies and procedures. What can we do to get the public able to see those?
Post them on your website.
Okay, so what we have in hand, you're okay that they go out to the public?
Council Zelinski's got the copy that has the approval date in the top left corner?
Yeah, your name.
Those are them.
Counselor Studley?
Hours of operation, I know there were concerns about that. Could you explain some of the advantages of that?
So, I think that there's a piece of, if the registered guests, there's that kind of minimization of trickle-down through community. People that are seeking cold weather shelter have minimal opportunities. So there's a very clear line about intake times, about door close times, and about door open times. We've heard from the DBA that the one upside to last year of the warming center was the decrease in foot traffic in the downtown core. So that's one of the things that was brought up at the SAG today, was how do we track that? So that was one of the feedback loops that we were hoping to get from community, is what's working as opposed to what's not working?
Counselor Crunk?
Yeah, just to clarify, when you say hours, and then it's 24/7, but there are specific hours of operation. Even though technically it's open, but there's about visitors and hours of operation, so it is, could you explain what the hours of operation are?
So, what we're going to do is intake will be between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. Visitors have to be in by 10:00. If somebody chooses to leave the facility between 10:00 and 7:30 a.m., they're not allowed back in, unless they have valid reason. So employment at, say, 6 o'clock, they have to be somewhere for employment, unemployment, whatever. Otherwise, there's an expectation that they abide that evening. During the day, they're free to leave. You know, if you have errands to run downtown, by all means, the expectation is, when you come back, you're not dragging your friends back with you. If you're a registered guest, you're coming back under your own power.
Thank you. Counselor Zelinski?
Questions, staff, what there is, or the wording of the comfort level of weather? Any reason that we got rid of the word "cold" when we talked about extreme weather shelter?
Daniel?
I believe this was how it came from, back from legal counsel, but we didn't ever had "cold" in there. We only had it as extreme shelter. If council wants to put in "extreme cold," fine by me. I don't think it was in there the other day.
And I'm not sure we want to limit it, since we are asking for a general extreme climate action at a regional level, that we might want to leave that open.
Yeah, the problem with this is, we have something very specific in a very specific timeframe, and further down in this document, it does say, "related to extreme cold weather." So...
I can't see them getting confused, but if you want to add that, I have no difficulty with it.
I just think it goes with more common terminology, that's all.
Darren, and then...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think Council Zelinski's correct, as I think B.C. Housing still refers to this bracket as an ECWS program, so that would be extreme cold weather shelter. So I think Council Zelinski has nailed the language on that.
And we can add that, everybody comfortable with that? Counsel Crunk supports.
Yeah, if that's added, that fixes it, because we're not going to get a heat wave or anything else that's going to come up before March.
Before March. Does someone want to put this motion on the table as we're now amending it? Counsel Mossland?
Yeah, that was my point, Mayor, as I was trying to figure out what the actual motion was. I'm going to see, unless staff, do you want to take the staff? I was going to just move the council send this letter.
Correct.
To B.C., to Boundary Family Services?
Yeah, submitted to B.C. Housing and Boundary Family Services.
As soon as possible? How's that sound? At least that gives action, we now know what we're trying to achieve. Anyhow, I would make that motion.
Counsel Crunk, want to second that?
Yeah, I do.
Motion's on the floor, then. Further discussion here without limiting? Counsel Zelinski?
I'm going to state the obvious. You're on a shoestring here, you know, and you guys mentioned that your reputation's on the line. We've written this in such a way that if something goes wrong, we'll be pounding on the door, and, or at least we'll have discussion at this table, and I'll be pounding on the desk, that those rules weren't followed. So that's the understanding that I have, and I'm sure the community has. So, at the end of the day, I wish you luck.
Counsel Thompson?
I just want to say thank you to Boundary Family Services Society for taking this on. I read your draft guidelines, policies, yesterday, and very impressed. It's very relieved, if anything, you've left out of me even covered earthquakes, and we're not necessarily prone to that, so I really thank you for taking this on, and I have every confidence that it will be well-run, and that the community will benefit from this.
Plus tsunami, we didn't have tsunami.
What did you comment? Counsel Crunk?
Yeah, I just want to say that I did review the rules of regulations, and Darren and I had a little bit back and forth on that, and I am confident it will be run according to how we feel, and I have faith in Boundary Family Services, and I wish them well.
Thank you. Ready for the vote, council? All those in favor? Counsel Crunk's hands up?
Yeah, I'm standing waiting.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much, council. Now, since we did pass the feedback from the gallery, do we want to repeat that tonight? It's up to council?
Yeah, it's part of a meeting, like if it's...
Well, we did it once, but we could do it again, if it's your desire.
We've got a few details, we have more details out there, I don't know.
So that's a yes, I'm seeing?
Sure.
All right, then I'll put it up to, before we close, comments and participation of the gallery. Gary Smith?
I was down to see Lorraine Dick today and offer to do a shift, so they're looking for people to come in and do four-hour shifts, so I just put it out there to everyone to come out and do it.
And, Gary was saying that he has taken a shift at the shelter and invites other people to do the same at this point. I understand we're moving towards something worked out by Friday. There's, at this point in time, still discussions between Boundary Family and B.C. Housing to take part, to take place tomorrow, but...
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I have, speaking my regrets.
Negotiating with B.C. Housing, is that...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And further comments? Ann, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if Darren or Gina could just talk a little bit, for people that are watching, about the opening this up for neighborhood to come and talk and express their concerns, and perhaps you could talk a little bit about that?
Good neighbor plan? Yeah, so, I don't need the microphone, do I? So thanks for that, Ann. So as per our good neighbor agreement discussion today at the SAG, we're going to, once we get the place kind of a little more organized and streamlined, we'd like to invite the community to come from that general neighborhood and just have discussion, and the tour just talk to us about what their concerns are, and to kind of keep that level of communication open, so that we don't have to have a repeat of last year, where people feel not heard and not acknowledged for where they live, so, yeah, that's, that'll be forthcoming. We did discuss a communication strategy for that today at the SAG.
Thank you. And further from the gallery?
Sorry, I'm not sure if I direct Brad or Mr. Mayor, I would like to know, if I do have questions, do I talk to, who do I talk to? Would that be you? So you have hours?
First go to the shelter, and if not resolved at that level, they would go to Boundary Family, and from there, I'm not sure whether we get involved or not. Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke to this at the meeting this afternoon as well. It would really help if people would contact first the shelter, then Darren and his process, whatever that is, I think it's info@bfis.org. The next level would probably be best be city staff through info@grandforks.ca, and then to council. If you go to council first, and council comes to me, then I go to Darren, and then from Darren, we go to the shelter, it's the wrong process. So ideally, if citizens have concerns right now regarding this specifically, please pray unto Mr. Pratt. I would also quickly like to ask for support from the community and help from the community. We've heard last year there was noise concerns, and we heard a lot of feedback, negative feedback about this situation. If it's better this year than it was last year, I would love to hear that feedback as well. Most people don't submit that kind of feedback, because they're happy, but like, I want to know about those differences. Mr. Pratt wants to know about those differences, because he wants to make sure he's doing a good job. We want to make sure it's run the way it's supposed to. And all this stuff will be recorded, statistics created, and hopefully we can show the level of improvement for a well-run operation there.
Counsel Crunk?
Yeah, I'm watching a live stream, anyways. There was a question on there, which are, are volunteers screened, and would they have
Because of the short duration of this shelter program, the odds of us being able to train volunteers, highly unlikely. Our hope for volunteers, as it came up at the SAG today, is we had feedback that volunteers would like to bring expertise outside of social services. They would like to find ways to support and provide things like cooking classes and basic life skills. We have really good feedback from our community partners today, that we will have an influx of social services coming in to help support us through this process.
And then, I'll add this for mine, which is, and staff will have criminal record checks?
So, the thing to understand, it's an adjunct, we're an accredited agency, so our standing 310 pages of policy and procedure override this. So anybody that works in our agency has to pass criminal record checks. So this is an odd issue, so kind of what council got was just, as it pertains directly to the shelter program, our overarching accreditation policy is very specific on all the other domains. So, yeah, criminal record checks and training.
Counsel Zelinski?
I might as well ask this question in public, and because I want to privately. Phone number, Darren, as far as if volunteers want to help for the shelter or anything else? If you want to just publicize your phone number now, would be great.
For now, we use the main building, which is 250-442-2267. We don't have a landline set up at the shelter yet, so once that is set up, we will do another media piece where that goes out for the direct shelter line number.
Okay, for the next couple days here, whatever that's...
Counsel Studley?
I'd just like to point out that all the activity that's happening now is completely separate from Darren and this and all that, so, yeah, just people keep that in mind.
Standby?
I'm just getting questions about if it's after hours, like say after 10 o'clock, how would they go about contacting them? Would they actually come and knock on the door, or how would you want?
You bet.
Yeah?
Knock, and ideally, there will also be a landline where they can just call, so people don't have to come across the street to knock.
Okay.
But, yeah, you bet.
Awesome, thank you.
Ideally, we're in an awkward place with our policies and procedures. If they're outside the building at 10 o'clock, they're technically trespassing. So that becomes an enforcement issue.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to say that I hope this is moving in a different direction, where we have a champion for housing and that the city can play a role in supporting that. I also think that the city's commitment at this point to address the after April the 1st situation will not be forgotten. I would like to see us supporting a plan for that for our community and for this not to happen next year. We promised we would get at it, and I think that we're committed to doing that as a council. Counselor Crowe?
Yeah, I've just not argued so far, so I'm feeling kind of.
Knock yourself out.
Talking about an emergency cold weather shelter, and I believe every community should have a shelter. After April 1st, none of our business. We do not need a year-round shelter in the City of Grand Forks, especially without.
I don't think that's on the table at this point.
You were just talking about it.
No, I was talking about a plan for after April 1. I hope that is not a shelter plan. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Crowe, or Counselor Crowe, pardon me, the SAG, we did discuss a pin count today, actually, so that is on the radar for, I, Counselor Moslin, is that the third week in work?
You mentioned third week.
So that's, we're moving towards that, because you're right, we do not have anything resembling good, clear data.
Counselor.
And we also discussed at the meeting today that we want to continue meeting so that we don't get into this situation next December, and so we're going to be meeting, I think it's every two weeks?
29th, I believe.
Yeah, the 29th, and moving forward additional meetings so that we can come to a consensus and come back to council with a recommendation for something more permanent.
Planning. All right, thank you all. Oh, Gina?
Sure, just one thing. Because we're a policy board and you had picked up a couple details in the policy that are, that, you know, we can massage, if you could let us massage those couple things, like the resident client, make sure that's consistent, and then that one piece that you mentioned where we speak about a future state, we'll clean that up before we offer that for posting to your, to your website, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Just so that we don't end up with questions coming back to us that we've already answered.
Yeah, there was a couple that said about the rooms.
Yes, yeah, so rooms.
Sent back to their room or something like that, so.
All right, so any positive start to these issues with homeless? Can I have a motion?
Motion through here.
Sure.